This conference will now be recorded.
Where's that at?
I knew that wasn't real.
Usually I can take one off my hand to get it through. I usually have at least one Band-Aid on part of it. No, you mean the legislature.
Well, that's why we're here is that, Captain Dean, with some...
Not, yeah, the next council, not next one.
Probably fifteen?
Yeah. You gotta go?
Where's going to be a picture?
Good place.
Yeah, but we're in the same hotel instead of trying to drive back and forth.
Oh, is that three days?
It's just a full day the first day and then usually the governor who does this is going to take you.
I don't, yeah, I just go up on one day, but after dinner I cut out.
So I believe as dumb as I am, I stay for all the time I'm talking.
Well, it's good there, too. All right, ready to go? All right, let's do it. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I, the Honorable Mayor Andrew Dawson, hereby call to order this meeting of the Soudalia City Council on this fifth day of February, part of the 2023-2024 session. Let us proceed with purpose and dedication to values that guide our great city. The meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is prayer followed by pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor to lead us from prayer.
Would you stand as able and join me in an invocation? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Soudalia City Council, mayor, administrators, staff, and members need to hear about and discuss important matters and make decisions for the good of this community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication to our city. We ask your protection of all of our first responders, police, and especially tonight, perhaps honoring Bradley Beard Thirty-Five Year Service Award in our police department. God bless that service. For our sheriff's department, for fire department, EMTs, ambulance attendants, hospital staffs, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, of which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these 247 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all military and civilians serving our country today, here and throughout the world, keeping our way of life safe from threats from without and sadly also from within. We must remember our debt of gratitude that we owe to them all. And now as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all of us we pray in the name of our risen, living Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the new republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
All right, first item on our agenda is service awards. For that, we're going to go into the police department first, so I'll go ahead and invite up interim chief Woolery to go ahead and present those service awards. Sergeant Beard started his career at the Soudalia Police Department on January 11th, 1988. I was a sophomore in high school, Brad. Sergeant Beard has had more assignments at the SPD than we currently have record for. So just going off of my memory, here's a list of a few. He's a patrol sergeant, he's been a detective sergeant, community policing, SWAT, and that was back in the 90s, it was a different world than policing then, defense tactics instructor, honor guard coordinator, citizens police academy coordinator, dare coordinator, dare instructor, dare mentor, women's self-defense instructor, and I know I probably missed a few. But Sergeant Beard's contributions go on much longer than we have time to discuss. So instead, I like to talk about the kind of employee Brad has been for me. Anytime I was a patrol commander and I had an emergency that I needed a sergeant on night shift, Brad was my guy. Anytime that we had a difficult position or something that needed to be filled, coordinated, and executed, that was out of the norm, and we needed volunteers because you don't really want to volunteer, tell somebody to do that, Brad's always been my guy. Brad does these tasks without complaint or reservation. If it needs to be done, Brad does it. Brad is a living example of how policing changes depending on the needs of the community, and a police officer needs to be able to change with it. Every agency needs people like Brad, and we've had him for 35 years. So let's hope we have him 35 more. Officer DeSalle, would you come forward? I don't have a lot of people that could follow up Brad on something like that, but Derek actually comes in pretty close. Officer DeSalle has started his career at the Soudalia Police Department on January 5th of 2014. Officer DeSalle has established himself as a viable member on the patrol shift as a dare officer and on the special response team as a member on that unit, but that does not cover the scope of his service. I was there when Officer DeSalle interviewed. That evening, he expressed his desire to make personal relationships with members of our community. While a lot of officers make that claim and have that intent, very few of them are actually as successful as Officer DeSalle. When you read a post on social media, especially on Facebook, about an officer stopping to play basketball or football with kids, that's most likely going to be Officer DeSalle. When the schools have an issue with a student that needs the right officer to de-escalate the situation and help get to the root of the issue, they ask for Officer DeSalle. Officer DeSalle is a familiar face in the schools, walk in the halls, talking to kids, teachers, and administrators, being the example that we're there for them and he's doing it with a smile. Officer DeSalle mentors several kids on his off time and continues to be an ambassador for us and the community both on and off duty. Officer DeSalle is a great example of the partnership between the community and the police department. Officer DeSalle, congratulations on 10 years, though. Thank you. Thank you, Ford. Now we have a service award for Public Works, so we're going to go ahead and invite up Assistant City Administrator Ward to go ahead and present that service award.
Hi, we're going to celebrate five years with Frankie Vanderfool.
Thank you, Mark.
Works in our wastewater department. He's been with us five years, does a lot of the camera work, and although you don't see a lot of his work, he's out there making sure that all of our utilities work great, so we...
Appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your service. See, up next, we have the approval of the previous session minutes. These are the council meeting minutes dated January 16th, 2024.
Just approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, council. Now we have the roll call for standing committees. Up first is Finance Administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to open up for discussion. Moving our next city council meeting to Wednesday, the 24th, or Thursday, the 22nd. Our scheduled meeting falls on Monday, the 19th, which is President's Day. Normally, we would move the meeting to the next day, but Mayor Dawson and several council members will be at the annual MML legislative day. This change will need a motion second and an approval by voice.
Does anyone have any discussion regarding changing the date?
Any preference for Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday's fine, please.
Wednesday's fine.
Wednesday. All right, I entertain the motion and the second.
So move to Wednesday, the 21st?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we'll get that moved.
That is all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We have about five items tonight, but the first one we have to work with is needing a call for an ordinance amending the city code to authorize the use of a design-build process for water treatment and wastewater projects.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-6. An ordinance of the city of Soudalia amending the city code to authorize use of design-build processes for water treatment and wastewater projects.
Second reading?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Bill number 2024-6. An ordinance of the city of Soudalia amending the city code to authorize use of design-build processes for water treatment and wastewater projects.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please. Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
All in favor? All right. Ordinance passed.
Second item I have tonight is a bid rejection. We need a motion to reject a bid to most city properties. These are properties have leased out to allow individuals to harvest hay in exchange for keeping the mode. We sent out a request for proposals for each of these properties, and the bids did not meet the minimal requirement. The staff recommends rejecting the proposal.
Motion to reject bid.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion?
So how are we going to get them done?
Yeah. What the staff recommends is that one of the things that we put in the request or the requirements was a, I can't remember, it was a certain amount of insurance, and we believe with talking to some of them that that was the reason why they didn't bid is that they weren't able to secure that much insurance. So we just wanted to take another look at it, see if we can reduce that insurance and maybe some other requirements in there to give more...
Anything further, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Third item I have tonight will consist of a resolution and two ordinances. This is a resolution and ordinance amending the budget to allow the painting of the bowl of the city's water tower. If you recall, last year, the Lions Club offered and has raised funds to cover the cost of painting the city of Soudalia logos on the tower, but it would also be wise to paint the bowl first to increase the quality and the longevity of those logos.
All right. Call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution 2078. A resolution of the city council of the city of Soudalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend the increase in the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Yeah, I think this is, if we're going to do a budget, then we amend it if there's an emergency. This is hardly an emergency, you know, and all that, we were going to match the grant or we were going to match the contribution, and it was going to be 40 grand, and now it's 116,000. Now, if it's an emergency, somebody needs to go up there and put their finger in the hole or whatever, but if it's not, I think it ought to be a budget item for next year. Anything?
I agree with Jack. I, you know, it was, it was a conceived project, but it was never really a complete project and was never put together. They got a number that wasn't an accurate number, and now we're seeing the end of that process where they, you know, we're looking at 116,000 dollars, and that's, that's water department money that could be used for other capital improvement in the water department. I, I don't support this, and so I either don't support the resolution or I don't support the ordinance, but I, I don't think it's something that we should do. I agree with Jack. You know, we just looked at a refuge truck, a new trash truck that was hit. That's a reason that we would have a resolution and an ordinance, but in this particular case, other than going through the normal budgeting process, I can't support this.
Did the Lions Club come up with enough money for the logos?
Uh huh.
And so the city wouldn't have to put in any funds for the logo?
We did the matching, but we also need to clean and paint the tower.
Yeah. The Lions Club and the other civic organizations, they came together, they raised 40,000, I think it's 200 dollars. The, just to paint the logos would be 28,000 and some dollars, so with the budget amendment that was already done, or even just the 40,000, we could paint those logos, but you can't paint the bowl underneath it, which the bowl is, my understanding, was painted in 1999, so it's been a little over 20 years since it's been painted, so staff's recommendation was is to go ahead and paint the bowl underneath it before we apply logos. That's council's prerogative, I mean, council's decision.
I'm not sure why we didn't think about that before we discussed the logos to begin with. I guess that's kind of the issue that I have, that, and if we paint the top, then is the rest of it going to look like that soon? I mean, it, I don't know, it doesn't seem like it's been well thought through, that's my, my issue with it.
When we, when we first started on this project, we, we got estimates on what it would take to put the bowl or put the logos on. We put, when we sent out the bids, we asked for their proposals as far as, you know, washing it and cleaning it and all of that. The proposal absolutely said that we can go ahead and paint the logos at the time that you do need to repaint the bowl, then they can just touch up around it. They basically paint around where the logo is applied. So we can certainly go forward with just putting the logos on if that's what you all want. I just was again, well, and, I'm sorry, I left that piece up. So when we went out for the RFQ, we put, we had them put, or RFP, I'm sorry, we asked for them to put bid alternates in it, and so we asked for just painting the two logos, we asked for an alternate to paint the bowl before they applied the logos, and then we asked for an alternate to paint the whole thing, so.
Any further, council discussion?
What's the expiration on the, I mean, when, when will the bowl and the tower itself really need to be painted? In talking, I don't see, I don't see anybody here, but in talking with Dave Murray at our water department, he said they, they have to inspect it every once while. He said, yes, it's, it's about time to, to paint it, but we don't have to if you all want to do it.
It's to be a next year budget thing.
Okay, well, that, but again, just get it in the budget process. If it's a couple of years from now and we can paint it in the regular process and get our money out of the current coating and then put those logos on, that's fine, but we're, we're going through an entire budgeting process right now. We've done it for several months, and this doesn't meet a standard for me, we, we need to get out of that. The great examples, there's the trash truck, yeah, I got no problem with that, but this one can go into a regular budgeting process.
So are we, are we needing, are you waiting a motion just to put it as a line item in the next fiscal year's budget?
I, I'm just planning on voting no, and it'll naturally get there. I don't think we need that.
What does naturally get there mean?
Well, I mean, next year when we go into the budgeting process, I don't think, I don't think we really need a motion. Next year, when we get into the budgeting process...
There's already a motion on the floor. This is, with this with regards to this resolution, so this is to approve this, this budget item. Do I have any, anything further, council? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. Okay. Now we'll go ahead and move on to the ordinance. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, because the resolution failed by law, you have to have a resolution stating the intent, so that would move the, the ordinance, so that will, that, you can't even come up for approval.
Okay, perfect. The item has failed.
Well, thanks. Now, I would offer, if you wanted to move ahead with the contract to just put the logos up, you could do the third, the second ordinance to approve the contract, but it would be only at the 28,000. I prefer to just let it die. I want to see the plans and the specs, the, the quality of paint, the number of coats of paint, and those types of things. Honestly, when we first heard a 40,000 dollar bid, I can remember when, years ago, it was going to be, when Dad and Katie were on the water board, it was going to be 50,000 dollars. Ten, at least, maybe 15 years ago, paint the logo on the water tower. Honestly, 40,000 dollars seemed too good to be true when I heard it, and I want to make sure when we do this, we've got a complete plan in place so we get a, a good bid, we don't get, I want to get, I would prefer that we have the best paint, not, not good, better, but the best paint, several coats of that paint. I want to make sure that we have a completely defined project so that we don't make the same mistake again of just saying, hey, let's paint the logo on the water tower. Well, that's a project, and there's more things. Preparation is important, the lifting of the people to get that there is important. It's a pretty substantial construction project. It's not as simple as just going to Lowe's, getting a couple gallons of paint, and painting the logo. And I, I know I'm oversimplifying it, but I want to make sure we have a good...
So do you want to see the RFP that went out?
Yeah, I want to see the, the new one that goes out. I, I'd like to have a better...
Well, we, we have an RFP that was already out, and we have people that responded to it.
Sure, I'd like to look at that and...
Okay. So do we want to reject those? Do we want to delay them? We can bring that back up again. There's an, a council meeting, so that wasn't noticed yet.
How does this affect the other ordinance that we approved that we would match the funds?
Technically, you've got 80,000 dollars in the budget right now. Well, we'll bring that, RFP back to the next council meeting.
Okay. Any other motions?
The motion or the resolution and ordinance have failed, so let's go ahead and move along to the next item.
The next item I have tonight is the, something we do on a regular basis, is the annexation and utility service agreement. These are for properties on New York Avenue, and speaking with the mayor earlier, we believe that our counselor may have a process that might simplify this for us. Let's move along quicker. So, counselor?
Yes. It is important for the city to approve any annexations in individual ordinances because they have to be recorded with the county recorder of deeds, and also if there were any sort of a defect or a problem with an annexation later, we wouldn't want all annexations adopted together into fails. We'll do these individually, but procedurally, you are allowed as a council to make a motion to do the first reading of, of the title of the ordinance for, for the bill numbers that exist. You can vote on those in one vote. The city clerk can then read the titles of each ordinance, and then you can vote again one time for a second reading of all seven ordinances, a bill, bills, a title to the ordinances. The city, if you approve it, the city clerk can do that again, and then you can also on the, on the final approval, then you have to roll all those. We have seven ordinances this evening. I can help you reduce down 21 votes to three with this process. So my recommendation would be to do that, but you, it's your call.
I would, I would take that recommendation.
I would. So we have a motion to read ordinances 2024 and not dash nine through 2024-15?
Bill numbers.
Yep. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, go ahead and proceed with the reading of those ordinances.
Okay. Bill number 2024-9. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3100 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-10. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3110 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-11. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3120 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-12. An ordinance authorizing annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3130 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-13. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3140 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-14. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3150 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. And bill number 2024-15. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3160 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system.
Second reading?
I have a motion for second reading of bills 2024-9 through 2024-15. Do I have the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Bill number 2024-9. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3100 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-10. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3110 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-11. An ordinance authorizing annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3120 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-12. An ordinance authorizing annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3130 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-13. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3140 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. Bill number 2024-14. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility service agreement for connection of property located 3150 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system. And bill number 2024-15. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection of property located at 3160 South New York Avenue to the city of Soudalia's water distribution system.
Final passage?
I have a motion, the second, for final passage of bills number 2024-9 through 2024-15. Do I have any council discussion regarding this final passage? Having heard none, roll call, please. Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, and thank you, council, for providing us a easier way to get that...
I couldn't say, I couldn't say jeez.
Thank you. All right, and the line item I have tonight is an ordinance approving the upgrade of software and hardware monitoring system, our SCADA system. This system monitors critical components and alerts when, when a percent limited, limits are exceeded. This is for our water and wastewater department.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-16. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for upgrade of the supervisory control and data acquisition system for the central and southeast wastewater treatment plants.
Second reading?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading of this bill? Having heard none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for upgrade of the supervisory control and data acquisition system for the central and southeast wastewater treatment plants.
Final passage?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Old.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right.
That's all I have, guys.
Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Wilson, you have the floor.
The animal shelter operations require the use of veterinary services. Using a contract outlines the services, and using one veterinarian provides for a more stable level of service at a reduced cost. The previous contract has expired, so staff has submitted an RFP, and we received only one proposal from the current provider. The rates are increased, but are still well below open market rate. Staff recommends approval.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for veterinary services for the Sedalia Animal Shelter.
Second reading?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the second reading of this ordinance? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for veterinary services for Sedalia Animal Shelter.
Final passage?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, uh, roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
All in favor.
Chief Erwin, with his eagle eyes for grant opportunities, has found two more for, for us, and I'd like to, him to come up and speak to those three.
Do you need any council?
Um, the first qu- or ordinance that you have coming up is the AFT grant. This is the same grant that we, assistance to firefighters grant that we apply for every year. Um, the last two years, we have received that grant. Um, so this year, we're going to try again for, for some equipment for our regulators for SCBA. Um, the second ordinance is a safer grant. Um, that grant is for personnel. Um, the six personnel that we're looking to add staff to for the squads, um, we are going to try to get the safer grant to pay for them for three years. Any questions?
I believe we have, we have most of that, too. Okay. Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand seventy-nine, a resolution authorizing the Sedalia Fire Department to submit an assistance to firefighters' equipment grant application.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any council discussion regarding the passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Up next, uh, we also have the resolution regarding the, uh, safer grant. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand eighty, a resolution authorizing the Sedalia Fire Department to submit an assistance to firefighters' safer grant application.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Uh, that's all we have for public safety. Up next, we have community development. Uh, Chairman, uh, Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. We just have one item this evening. Um, for the last several years, the city has had a program that utilizes the special business district funds to help offset the cost of restoring façades within the central business and central district, uh, cultural district, sorry. With, um, the invigoration of the Sedalia Main Street Committee, they have brought forward a modification of these concepts to promote a subset of the full facade restorations as awning mini-grants. These are aimed at enticing downtown businesses to replace awnings that are showing somewhere. Uh, staff has worked with the committees to develop an application process and agreement, and they approved the process, and they recommend us approving the process and agreement terms.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen, an ordinance approving an awning mini-grant program agreement and application for community development.
Second reading?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen, an ordinance approving an awning mini-grant program agreement and application for community development.
Final passage?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller.
Hill.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Foster. Now, another business, we have liquor licenses. Call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have one new license and four renewals tonight. A new license for Jessica Diggan doing business at Elro Dale Mexican Restaurant at fourteen hundred South Limit for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales, and renewals for Kathy Getz doing business at Break Time number thirty seventy-nine at twenty-eight oh one West Broadway for packaged liquor. Peyton Burton doing business at Bandana's Barbecue at twenty-nine oh nine West Broadway for beer and wine and Sunday sales. Madison Gardner doing business at Tiger Eagle Stop at thirty-four fifteen East Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. And Erica Ising Minger doing business at Ivory Grill LLC at three seventeen South Ohio for sidewalk consumption and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion to approve these liquor licenses?
The, uh, new Mexican restaurant, that's the old hearty, isn't it?
Yes. Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, counsel. Now we have any, uh, miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator?
Yes. Those few of us who still take the newspaper and printed form may have seen a legal notice from DNR, which is an application for sanitary disposal area in Pettis County. That's another dump. Uh, I don't think we should, that we need another dump. Uh, if I lived on the west, on the far west side of town, I really wouldn't think so. Uh, and I believe that we should write a letter, uh, of non-support for this and send it to DNR, my bad. So far, I suppose by a group of Pettis County, I don't know about the Pitt County Commissioners, I'm sure they oppose it also, but there's not a reason for us not to add our, our interest in it.
Jack, is that, uh, the article that you have there, does it have an address where those letters?
It does. It's an old deal.
Okay.
This is the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, et cetera, et cetera. I'll give it to you.
And we'll go ahead and, we can pass that around, and any of the council members that would like to go ahead and submit a letter, or?
No, I think as a group, we should submit it.
I, I agree. I'll sign it. With the jar? Anything further, counsel? Anybody else?
Just an announcement that the Black History Program that was postponed has been rescheduled, and it will be on February the twenty-fifth at three P.M. at Burns Chapel Field Baptist Church.
What time did you say, Tina? I'm sorry.
Three, three P.M.
What about Valentine's? Is there something that Valentine's at Burns Chapel?
Burns Chapel is doing a Valentine's lunch. Yep, ten dollars for, um, cornish hen, green beans. I don't know.
A delicious dinner.
A delicious dinner.
Delicious.
They've got secret.
All the chicken.
Secret. Are they having chicken?
Yes.
It's cornish hen.
The water and everything.
Devil wear and everything. We'll deliver. Just in their home.
Door dash.
Door dash. Be happy if you were to, uh, support it.
Don't forget to, to vote tomorrow.
Don't forget to vote.
Yeah. Uh, and that's what I was going to say is, is I was, uh, very thankful for the, um, um, the nice weather that we had Thursday and Saturday, and all of the folks that, that came out and, uh, listened to the, the, um, information about the Sedalia, the sewer plant tours. Uh, I thought that they went well. Thank you to the media for covering that. Um, I thought the stories were, were very good. And, uh, just to point out, remember that this is not a tax. It is merely permission for, uh, from the voters to go borrow the money from the, the low-interest state revolving fund and, um, uh, to basically do what DNR has made us do. So it's the lowest cost that we have found any way of, uh, of a way to accomplish what we're going to have to do. Um, either way, uh, I won't say which way to vote, but, uh, please make your voice heard, and everybody go, go, go vote, uh, by tomorrow, two sixth, or February sixth. And, um, uh, it's at the, there is only one location. It's at the, um, uh, at the election authority at the county, so down on Pitt Street. So, uh, again, make your voice heard. Um, let us know what you think. Uh, beyond that, um, we had a, um, an event today where our fire department was, um, uh, rescued somebody that was, uh, trapped in a confined space that had fallen down. And so this, um, training and, uh, technical rescue stuff, the equipment and all of that that you all approved a couple of years ago, two thousand nineteen, uh, came into play and, uh, got somebody out without further injury to them and without injury to our firefighters. So, um, uh, very successful. Congratulations. And thank you, chief.
I'd like to thank staff and council members and mayor and city administrator for putting everything together for the tours at the wastewater treatment plant. The, and the citizens that came loved it. I wish more would have come, but it was very, very, very cool for everyone to go out and see that. And I wanted to thank everybody, because there was a lot of work going to putting that together, and it was excellent. And I would like to congratulate Mayor Dawson. Five years ago today, he joined city council. Seems like it was about twenty-five years ago. So happy anniversary.
You're blessed, though. Well, anything further, counsel? All right. Having none, uh, heard none. Ladies and gentlemen, we've now arrived at the Good and Welfare section of our agenda. This is a unique opportunity for residents of our beloved city of Sedalia to directly address their city council. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for this segment. Each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name and address. You will be allotted three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with council, nor is this a period for question and answers. It is time for you to make your voice heard and for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the permanent public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community matters. Thank you for your participation in helping to maintain the decorum of this process. So we'll now go ahead and open up the microphone for anybody that would like to step forward and address counsel.
Good afternoon. My name is William Stark. Uh, my address is twenty-one oh nine East Broadway Boulevard. Um, I'm here tonight. I'm a new constituent to the area, and I recently, um, went to go try and get my water set up, and they said that it was required that I provide a hundred dollar deposit. Um, upon further review on my end, uh, Missouri Public Service Commission states that that is against the rules to require everybody to pay the hundred dollar deposit, and there are certain circumstances in which a deposit cannot be required. And I feel that this is something that would affect a lot of disabled people and elderly people that do live on social security and disability and do have limited income to be able to pay for extra things. Um, uh, I mean, that's, that's really what it comes down to. So, I mean, the city is not in compliance with what's set forth by the Missouri Public Service Commission in regards to that. So how can we address that? That's all I got.
Thank you for comments.
No comments back?
Uh, no. This isn't a section where we debate with people. This is a section just for you to make a public statement.
Awesome. I will be, uh, seeing you later. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Bill Taylor, Pettis County Presiding Commissioner. I just wanted to thank Mr. Robinson and Mr. Brooks for their support of opposing the landfill. And I just want to give you a little bit of an update. There are actually two landfills trying to permit in Pettis County right now, besides the one we have in operation, and it wants to expand. And if we don't try to do something, it's possible we could have three landfills running here in Pettis County at one time. Kansas City just did a study in their region E, and they had ten scenarios on how Jackson County and Cass County was going to have their trash problem. Six of those scenarios named Pettis County in it. If we don't band together, we're going to be the trash capital Midwest. We don't want that. And I know the city has a vested interest in keeping the trash local, and our goal of the county is to do that also. But we have to be able to get our ordinance to stand. Then we can make a concession. We can, we can permit a landfill with smaller volumes with a host agreement. But we need some support, and, and what you two did tonight goes a long way with that, and I do appreciate it, because this is a battle that you guys can't believe we fight almost every day at the courthouse. Now, I just want to thank you, and by the way, the street crew in Above and Beyond during the snow nights. Couldn't ask for a better job. I just wanted to tell you that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Thanks.
Renee Vance, one nine eight one three, Tangle Nook. Uh, we have got our second Sunday dinner on, at eleven o'clock. We're doing fried tenderloin with mashed potatoes, green beans, homemade, and, uh, dessert. So please come dine in, carry out. Uh, it is twelve dollars for adults, six for kids. Thank you for your support.
At the senior center, Hecker Senior Center.
At the Hecker Senior Center. Yes, sir.
I like your shirt. Show that to everybody.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm wearing a shirt.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Vance.
Hi, guys. Corey City, uh, eighteen oh four, South Park. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, I really urge you guys to take a couple or a few hours out of the, really a couple of days of your week to attend city court. Go to an arraignment day, go to a trial court day, and I would really like for you guys to see how your code officials and your police officers show up unprepared and unprofessional to court. It's, it's infuriating. Just go sit in the back of court. Just go sit. Listen to the way that whoever the city attorney sends to court that day talks to the citizen. It's infuriating. It's infuriating. And really, I see so many, there's so many people currently dealing with court that they're postponing dates because there's too many. And so I, I really wonder, looking at the city's legal fees, they're constantly going up. Budget is almost like sixty thousand dollars for more this year. So the city attorney's making more, but the city's really actually not even collecting those fines, because most citizens show up to court and don't have the money. So they just get put, they just accrue debt. The city accrues debt on their property. So even if they just wanted to just say, I'm done. I want to sell this property, they're going to have to go pay that fine before they can sell their house. So it, it just, it doesn't benefit anybody, actually. So I, I will be on the twelfth, whenever you guys have the meeting for the ICC. That's, that's great. Uh, yeah, I, and I also, looking at the budget, I, I think the city might be the single largest employer in Sedalia. Like, by number, I, I think, which is crazy, because again, we, the city doesn't produce anything. The city just absorbs citizens' money to do things. Uh, that, really, also I'd like to second is, uh, about the water connection fee. It's, almost everybody in town, it's, it's a remote service. If your water gets turned off, you call back in, they charge you a connection fee, but it's a remote. Nobody comes out. So if it's a new, you're moving in, the house has already had water, you have to be home anyway, well, that's a hundred dollars. So that's, my mom, on disability, older person, moved into a new place, had to pay that hundred dollars to get water turned on. That's, that's who it's being affected. And then also that, like, it is sort of frustrating hear, about hearing about the water tower, the time devoted, the money, citizens' money spent to then find out that, well, we've made a bunch of people make up bids, and then, uh... made a bunch of people make up bids, and then, we can't even, we're not even, we're not even at the right place to even start to do it. We're doing too much, guys. Like, just slow down, take your hands out of everybody's cookie jars, and just calm down. We don't need to do as much, okay, guys? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard City. Anybody else? Going once, going twice?
Seeing no more comments, I motion to move the closed-door session for legal advice, real estate, and negotiated contracts.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion to move the closed-door session? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.[1780.63]